I think I'm gonna call them.
We're recording. We're recording.
Okay.
Going ahead.
I'll call the October 23rd, 2024 Plants Planning Commission meeting in order. The first item on the agenda, Ms. Rambo, would you please call the role?
Jake Castile.
Here.
Jim Jackson. Pete McGory. David Miller.
Here.
Steve Pajali.
Here.
Connor Whelan.
Here.
Mike Zuloff.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the minutes from September 25, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move approval as distributed.
Mr. Miller's moved. Is there a second?
Yeah, sure.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, our first item is a public hearing on 1215 Campbell Street, and I think what I'll do is I'll have Mr. Oaks and Ms. Blair present it, and then we'll move into a chance for the public hearing to function, and those who want to come up and speak can come up and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is for 1215 Campbell Street. Glenn Pickens, on behalf of Campbell Christian Community Center, has submitted an application for amendment to the zoning map for 1215 Campbell Street. The application is to amend the zoning map from the current zoning, which is PF Public Facilities, to RMF Residential Multi-Family. The surrounding zoning of the property, to the north, is R2F2 Family Residential; to the east is currently RRB Residential Business; to the south will be PF Public Facilities; and to the west is R2F2 Family Residential. The current use of this property is a vacant building, and the proposed use is going to be residential, specifically residential multifamily. The structure has historically been a school. The applicant is in the process of splitting the parcel, which is going to separate the historic school structure from the more recent addition, which is currently the community center to the south. The proposed use of the historic building is to convert the structure into 12 to 20 apartments for long-term rentals. To do so, a zoning change must take place. The current zoning, Pub Facilities, only allows a residential use as an accessory use to the main building. Rezoning applications for zone map amendments are evaluated based on the current and desired land use of the applicant and the broader perspective of whether the zoning change makes sense for the expected future land use of the site and surrounding parcels. The existing parcel is adjacent to a district which allows multifamily as a main use, to the east, which is the RRB Residential Business. Staff has determined that rezoning to RMF Residential Multi-Family at 1215 Campbell Street will allow the building to be preserved and become an active use in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood. It is currently vacant, and the exterior is in need of care to prevent deterioration. This is a historic structure on the National Register of Historic Places, and reactivation of this property will salvage this historic structure from further decay. The zoning change, excuse me, is appropriate and is aligned with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan outlines a number of priorities for the central district neighborhood, which this property resides. Some of the priorities related to this site are to preserve historic and intact housing stock and maintain a quality of life in the neighborhood, and to strengthen neighborhoods, enhance amenities, and connect us to downtown. Planning processes and studies more recent than the comprehensive plan, including the Firelands Regional Housing Needs Assessment, call for the embrace of a variety of housing types in order to fill the gap of housing in our community, and this project will increase the supply. To create the new parcel for the historic building, several side setback variances will be required to split the parcels. Additionally, independent utilities will need to run to the two new buildings, which will be created by the lot split. The owner of the property and the proposed residential developer are working closely with staff to make sure these conditions are met in order to move the process forward. If Planning Commission supports the rezoning, the side setback variances will be placed on an upcoming Board of Zoning Appeals agenda for consideration. Should the rezoning and variances move forward, the site plan application will be on the Planning Commission agenda in the coming months as well. There's no further concerns from other departments and staff, and staff celebrates the preservation of this historic landmark in the city of Sandusky, and we recommend approval of the proposed zoning map amendment at 1215 Campbell Street, which is parcel 57-65011.000 with the following conditions, and that's that all applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency at the appropriate time of construction and operations of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Do you have any comments, Ms. Blair?
Yeah, I'll add a few comments, if you don't mind keeping us on the front view of that building. In all of our planning documents, as Mr. Oaks mentioned, the preservation of our historic architecture is always part of what the community is asking us to do. This is a nationally registered structure, and finding a new use for a big building like this is a challenge. We've seen here and in other historic school buildings that conversion to residential is a pretty good one-for-one, because the classrooms can become dwelling units. The site has plenty of room for parking. You will see this again, assuming the zoning moves through. You'll see this for a site plan for both of these projects. So another thing that's great for the community is that if we are able to split this parcel to create this residential project in the historic building, what they're going to do is build a firewall between that and the other existing structure, and Campbell Christian Community Center can stay in that other piece. They have the gym, the commercial-sized kitchen, they're feeding the kids there, they're welcoming the neighborhood there, and they get to stay there, and that's really what they want. But they don't want to have to maintain this big historic building that they don't need. So this project will enable more residential, which we know we need. It will enable that important after-school programming and kids' programming to stay where its home has been for the last, I think, 10 years. They can tell me if it's different. So it's a creative solution. It keeps the neighborhood intact. It adds more housing units, and we're really excited to see this prospect come forward.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. I think at this time I will open the public hearing, and anyone in favor of this proposal, please come up and state your name and address for the record and speak whatever you want to say. Yeah, right up here.
Good afternoon. My name is Robert Beck, and I reside in Huron, but I represent the Campbell Christian Community Center as a board member, and that's at 1215 Campbell Street in Sandusky. And at this time, we would just simply echo Ms. Blair's and Mr. Oaks' recommendations and thoughts and comments. Our heart is to save this building. We, as a nonprofit, focusing on unifying the community, helping kids find a safe place to learn and grow while being surrounded by caring adults. That's our game. That's what we're about. Caring for this giant building just has gotten to be too much. Through what we believe is divine intervention, we founded a builder that is quite capable, we believe, to bring this rehabilitation and transition about. So we just ask that you please consider it. We'd like to see this building saved. We know that we will be getting a good neighbor, and we're confident that they will enjoy us as neighbors as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to come up and speak?
Hi there. My name is Chris Summers. I'm the executive director at the Campbell Christian Community Center. I live on Monroe Street, about four blocks away. We've been looking for quite some time for an opportunity for us to find somebody to help us save the space, like Bob just mentioned. And we've had probably about 12 different property developers come through, and one way or another, it seemed like it wasn't quite a good fit for us. Finally, we started interacting with Glenn Pickens very recently, and we feel like we finally found a good fit for us. Again, I live about four blocks away from the community center. I spend about 60 hours a week there. So they're going to be my closest neighbor as well by the end of this process. So my desire is for us to continue on with this process, and hopefully, by this time next year, Glenn will be moving forward with having some new residents move into the neighborhood where I live. Again, Chris Summers, Campbell Christian Community Center.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Hello. My name is Marcy Platt. I live at 1217 Columbus Avenue. I've met with you guys in the past about FKN Performance, which is right across from, on Campbell Street, and I was assured by this commission that they would only park six motorcycles there. Well, if you drive there on a nice summer day, there's like 12 of them along there. Campbell Street only has parking on the one side, okay? You also have a VRBO that is two doors. I'm at 1217. They're two houses north of me. You allow 33 people at any time to be in that VRBO, and I believe 12 are allowed to stay over. This past summer, even though I live on Columbus Avenue, there is a spot for Mama Bees to my driveway that does not allow parking. The VRBO people have started parking there. I'd like to know how many units are going to go in, how many parking spots are there going to be, where will the guests park? This is a very congested area. Just about every type of motorcycle, mini-bike, whatever, rides down here. For anybody who was involved with that building, they did nothing over July 4th, other than it was a huge place to put off fireworks. There was nobody keeping any kind of manner, nothing at all. Part of the building, and I'm sure the people who owned it knew about it, was falling around with the bricks for quite some times, the big limestone things. So, in my opinion, you guys haven't even enforced the last time I was up here and addressed the problem with FKN Performance. Now, then you went and gave 33 people can be two doors down. You just don't have the parking. I want residential. I think that's great. I'd like to know, is that going to be low income? You know, who are the people that are going to go into that before we bring more people into our neighborhood? Any of you are welcome to sit in our backyards on a summer night and hear all the stuff that's going on Campbell Street. It's very loud, it's very everything. And then the other night, I get home, I get a phone call from my next-door neighbor. She says, "We got strips across, pulling a sap right in front of our houses where we can hear every car go across." Now, I don't know whose study that was, but I think they should have called us ahead of time and told us if they're monitoring for traffic patterns or whatever they're doing.
Yeah, I believe they had those off for traffic counts, and they usually don't notify the neighborhood when they do that, so.
Well, they should. They should.
Well, maybe. But they usually don't.
Well, there's a lot of... We're having a kind of... I've been here long enough, a lot of these... I'm a lot older, and I'm about you guys' age, probably. People are leaving this area for various things, like that, Steve, not being notified ahead of time that this or that's going to happen, and nobody has been watching the transient rental. They had a huge tree fall in. I'm just concerned that this will become, just like it is now, just a lot more people.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, and perhaps when we come back to the table, Mr. Oaks can address the parking situation and anything else. Is there anyone else that would like to get up and speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Glenn Pickens. I am the proposed developer of 1215 Campbell Street. If we're granted the zoning, bearing setbacks, things like that, I'm proposing to add 15, 18 market-rate apartments, so that's not low-income, that's not luxury, that's for common, everyday people. There will certainly be ample parking, and I hope that this project would better the community instead of hinder it.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens, while you're up here, I'm wondering, could I... I'd like to know what's your background as far as developing properties that might be similar to this?
So, I've operated in the construction industry for close to my entire life, almost 20 years now. Over the past seven years, I have slowly started developing smaller, pre-1920 buildings, very similar to this. Back in 2021, I completed a burnout building on Columbus Avenue at 1517, and I think that one is 11 units. So slowly, over the past seven years...
I'm sorry, that was true. The one on Columbus was for your own account?
Correct. So about one building per year over the past seven years, I've been, you know, learning a little bit more with each project.
And the reason I ask is my only concern with this, and I don't mean to digress from our discussion, is I would like to have some sort of a comfort level that if we were to change the zoning, that the project would get done, because I think it's going to be an expansive project. And just, I want... Do you have the resources to make sure that the project gets done? And my concern is what happens, say, down the road? If it doesn't materialize, then it's... We change the zoning, and somebody can come in after you and put something in there that's probably not good for the neighborhood.
I understand developers are optimistic and have pipe dreams. This is not one. Financing is all but secured currently. I am ready to run. I have a registration in my bag, ready to drop off with the city of Sandusky to start demo. The zoning requests and the setback variances are the only thing keeping me from doing so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pickens.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if I could...
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
So are you contemplating... You know, there was an impressive atrium in the building. And this might look tangentially relevant only, but it's more than that. It goes to the success, as Mr. Pajali was pointing out, that we care about this working. Will you be doing any restoration, like maybe removing some of the improvements to the partitions and that sort of thing off of spaces? And will you be adding any elevators, or do you contemplate any of that? Or are you... Is that too early to know? Like Ms. Blair said, the schools do lend themselves, because, you know, each classroom kind of suggests a living unit, so it's, to me, a great fit.
So the question...
What are you thinking so far?
Yes, the classrooms will be converted to two- or three-bedroom apartments. The common areas, the core, might be shrunk. That depends on our approach. But no, the existing stairways, entryways are all going to remain existing.
Thank you. And I just, while you're up, I'll take the chance to make the comment that I'm not too worried about this zoning class. I think that residential is one of the best reuses for these historic, larger schools, and it's fantastic architecture, and I'm sure you know what you're in for and know where to find the skills to do the repair and make sure that it's dry and maybe catch up with some of the masonry.
Well, the current repair order will certainly be taken care of immediately.
The what?
The current repair order on the...
Oh, of course, yeah.
I think it's the northeast corner of the building.
Yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Miller.
I'd like to take a crack at Mr. Pickens. Maybe I didn't catch it, but I'm concerned about the ownership structure, if it's... If the property is still controlled by the Nehemiah Center, or like your job is converted into a building, or do you... Is somebody going to sell this subdivided parcel and have a project that is owned by somebody else and run by somebody else, or...
No, no. So we will have a purchase agreement together once the zoning and the planning work has been completed. Once we know that is attainable, I will purchase the building, and I will hold the building as the owner, long-term.
Thank you. Then you'll rent the building and manage the building, or you'll sell it when it's done?
No, no. This is a hold position.
You said you are going to manage the building? Is that what you said?
Yes.
That was my only question. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the table?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just wondered if Alex was going to talk about the parking. I just had a comment.
Well, I thought maybe when we come back to the table...
Oh, no, nothing.
I'll have him address those questions.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pickens.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak for or against the proposal? If not, we'll come back to the table. Mr. Oaks, could you address those questions that were asked?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as proposed, if they were to go with the 15 units, it would require 22 and 1/2 parking spaces, so round it up to 23 for simplicity. If they went the 18-unit approach, it'd be 27 off-street parking spaces, and those are both calculated with 1.5 spaces per unit. Staff has determined that this site has ample space for parking and that those numbers are easily attainable, and we don't have any concerns.
And that parking would be behind the building, right?
That's correct. So that's strictly off-street parking.
Okay. I think we answered the number of units and the fact that they would be market-rate units, so I think that was the other question. All right. Any other discussion from around the table?
Mr. Chairman, I...
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
I would make the motion that we approve, or that we... I guess what should I be saying? That we recommend for the zoning change.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Oaks.
I just want to confirm that that's subject to staff conditions, Mr. Zuloff's recommendation.
Yeah, of course. Always a good idea, arguably, but okay. Thank you for that reminder. Subject to the conditions as recommended in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Ms. Rambo, would you pull the commission?
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Connor Whelan?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
David Miller?
Yes.
Jake Castile?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Just one other comment relative to what was said about the traffic on Campbell Street. I live around the corner, and I think you're right, and I think we need to address that as the city. So I'll get with Mr. Oaks, and we'll see if we can put a little focus on that. Under New Business, 1218 Cleveland Road. Yes. Congratulations. Looking forward to it. I think it sounds like a great project.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize. I'm going to try to not say this name incorrectly. Balshara Gruwal, on behalf of LLL LLC, has submitted an application for site plan approval at 1218 Cleveland Road. The zoning of this property is GB General Business. The surrounding zoning to the north is R175 Single Family Residential; to the east is GB General Business; to the south is GM General Manufacturing; and to the west is GB General Business. This is currently a vacant building. At one time, it had multiple businesses operating out of both structures. The proposed use is a multifamily residential development. The site is approximately 1.27 acres with an aged, existing parking lot and rear-side parking. There's also a grass lot and a detached structure in the rear of the property. The proposal is to convert the existing L-shaped structure into 10 apartments and a front office. The existing parking lot will be updated as part of the project with 48 new parking spaces, 12 of which will have... Excuse me, with an additional 12 spaces for a carport attached to the building. The property will have an access gate at the front for tenant privacy. The structure was built as medical offices and has historically been used for various business uses. Their strictest review of off-street parking standards would require 15 spaces at this site. The proposal is 60 new parking spaces, which is well above the minimum, to allow for additional phases in the future. The proposal is above the 25-space minimum for landscaping requirements, with two landscape islands and two trees being required. New trees and shrubs are proposed along the front inside edge of the site, measuring at a 12-foot landscape buffer along Cleveland Road frontage, so no additional landscape requirements are required. Staff has determined all land area and new standards are met. Staff conducted a preliminary site plan review with multiple departments and the applicant. All comments have been addressed in the updated site plan under this review. The applicant expects this project to be the first phase of work on the property. They are also studying the site for potential future improvements, which would include conversion of the rear structure, possible new construction, or in addition to the existing structure. If any of these phases are pursued, they would require additional site plan approval from the Planning Commission. There's no further concerns from other departments and staff. Staff recommends the approval of the proposed site plan at 1218 Cleveland Road, parcel 57-04182.000 with the following conditions: That's that all applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, Division of Planning, and any other applicable agency prior to any construction, and that all exterior light fixtures are dark-skinned compliant and meet the standards set by City Ordinance 24-161. Thank you.
I'll just mention...
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Ms. Blair?
Mr. Chairman, a few comments. When they first came in, like Alex mentioned, Alex mentioned that the prospective owner is under contract, subject to this approval, is my understanding. I think the architect is here. The prospective purchaser, the developer, sent his apologies that he couldn't come. His son is getting married tonight, so that's not something he could miss for his zoning meeting.
Pretty good excuse, sure.
But he explained to us that he's managed and built and reconverted several other buildings and built new construction in Toledo, and is really interested in Sandusky and what he sees are trends and the housing demand in our area. We expect that this would really beautify the site. You can see that it's got landscaping all around the edges and the front, the Cleveland Road frontage. So there would be just one entrance where you come in. That's kind of the leftmost entrance, where you see on the drawing. That would be gated, so the residents could get in there, and then the other two would be exit-only, and there would also be accommodations for a dumpster, so that, you know, they could come and take the trash out on site. But the covered parking is to the rear of the units, and then each of those units, kind of the L-shaped, is a little bit of a courtyard, and it has an overhang, and he said they would each have a little outdoor space, a little patio space there. So there's plenty of parking. It basically was an office building they're going to redo into residential. So again, it's adding more units that we so greatly need in the community, and I think it'll really beautify this site if they follow their proposed site plan and accept it.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Before we have discussion up at the table, is the architect or owner or representative here that might want to come up and state your name and give us a few comments?
My name is Walter Hales. I'm an architect from Toledo. I was actually only engaged less than two weeks ago on this, so there's a fair chance all of you know more about the project than I do, but I'm willing to answer any questions you have. He did engage me to start working on a layout, a little more detailed layout on the interior than what you have here. We really have, in two weeks, haven't had much time to develop, but I do have a schematic layout here to share with you, but to the extent you may be interested in that.
Is what we're looking at here, the site plan, where kind of... She heard the question.
Did you have any...
Is this...
This is the site plan that is...
I got an idea.
...for Planning Commission approval. Yeah, because the interior is not what we look at and approve. But I did have a question about the square footages of each unit. Do you have an idea of those?
Yeah. Well, he shared with me, I think, maybe one of your regulations, that 750 square feet is the minimum size for a two-bedroom, so we started that layout with that. I will say, there are a couple differences as we got into more detail in this. I'm not sure if that'll be relevant to your decision. Really, that back wing that's farthest away from Cleveland Road, there's really only space for three of those 750. There is space for additional... We've created a little efficiency unit. I'm not sure if that's within... I'm not sure if that's within your allowable development. And then there's actually, instead of any three-bedrooms, actually, we're able to get six additional two-bedroom units along the front L portion. Total 10 units in there, nine two-bedroom and one efficiency.
I was having a little trouble with the... I was trying to read this on my phone. I seem to remember an interior square foot number for the existing floor plan. I'm trying to get to, like, just an average square footage for that.
I think it's on your report, is 8200 square feet total building area?
Right. And I'm finding it now, and I was having trouble reading it online.
And I think that's very close. I think we came up like 83.
Tell me, where are we seeing the square footage in the report? I don't see it on the...
The total.
Oh, it's on the... No, I see it on the application.
Are you looking for the square foot per unit, Mr. Zuloff?
So, interior 1200, and you're contemplating, yeah... 44 units? That can't be right.
No, this is only 10 units.
What?
10 units.
10.
Number of dwelling units if applicable.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I can touch on that.
Mr. Oaks, could you clarify?
The plan looks like 10 units.
Let's hear Mr. Zuloff. Could you clarify?
Current plan is a multi-phase development. What's in front of you today is Phase 1, which is 10 units. The owner is confident that, or hopeful, it's probably a better word, that they can get up to 44 units with additional phases. I touched on that in the report. It's undetermined.
Where would these go?
Yeah, it's undetermined which style of the Phase 2 and 3 they're going to go with. They might do new construction on the rear grass portion, as an example. If the studies come back positive-
This site plan is 10 units?
Yes.
Correct.
In how many square feet?
Based on the application, it's 12,000 square feet for the two buildings, the L-shaped total buildings. So, divide that by the 10 units.
So, that would be 1200 units. 1200 square feet a unit average. That's a lot.
Yeah, I don't think that number is right, then. I think we had more like 83, 8400 square feet.
And I apologize. That might be-
I don't have that exactly at my fingertips.
Me misinterpreting the application. It does say 8200 square feet for residential apartment use.
I own an architect's scale. Once upon a time, we used to get these, you know, the East Side bed sheets, and you lay a scale on it, you could figure out what was going on. And we come in here, and I have no power to zoom. And I used to bring in an iPad, and now I've got a phone. So, I do miss the bed sheets. I don't miss killing the trees to get them. But, all right. I'm kind of satisfied that these are of reasonable... There's got to be-
Each, I'm sorry to interrupt. Each unit is 750 square feet, two-bedroom.
You said 750 square feet, and there would be an efficiency, right?
No, that's the two-bedroom.
That's the two-bedroom. And it looks like you may or may not make... If the larger units that I'm seeing here are 750, you may or may not make 400, which I believe is a minimum size in our community.
400 is the minimum efficiency unit size.
Right, the smallest.
Single, one-bedroom apartment or efficiency unit can be 400 square feet.
I think that was a very high-level conceptual idea there.
Yeah. Well, it's probably already in, you know, units, and they're probably... If it was commercial, they're probably all... Partisans are all over the place. Somebody rented 1200, and somebody rented 200, I'm sure. It was a motel historically, right? And then it became-
Doctor's office. Physician.
It was always doctor's offices originally. Yeah, okay.
So, and for what it's worth, the intention is it's so broken up, it's just going to be kind of a-
Gut it.
Gut it and start with interior purchase.
Contemplating, like, using the doors that are there and-
Yeah, I'm trying to, but with this concept of having really both the door from the front and a door out the back, so they have direct access to their cars, it's really hard to... There's a lot of new openings.
The reason I'm trying, our chair's patience here is because I'm trying to satisfy myself. I really agree with everyone that we need more housing. Doing it with substandard housing ain't the way to go. And I'm kind of getting the sense that's not where we're headed here. We're headed for, you know, good quality, up-to-code housing. And if that's what we're doing, then great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the goal is market.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Castile, did you have a question?
Through you, Chairman. Yes. I was going to ask also about the target market for the properties. Was it going to be geared towards affordable housing? And then I wanted to make sure I understood correctly. About 750 square feet per each 10-unit?
No, each single two-
Each one of the 10 units?
Yes, each unit of, each two-bedroom unit is 750 square feet.
So, this would be considered affordable housing, or you said at-market?
Honestly, I'd be honest, I did not have that conversation with him, so I don't really know. The criteria was to hit the 750 square foot mark, so.
Chairman, if it helps any.
Mr. Zuloff?
If it helps any, it's either going to be affordable, or it's going to fail, because you're not going to get waterfront, downtown waterfront views. You got traffic. It's-
Yeah, that was kind of my logic.
If they're nice apartments, they'll still be within reach, or they won't rent them. So, I'm satisfied that we're covering a lot of ground here and doing some good.
Mr. Miller?
Hey, it's a pretty simple question, just to expose my ignorance. Is this... Maybe somebody here can tell me if this is the location where Sandusky Peds was 25 years ago?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I've been around that building.
And that front part was the pharmacy.
Yeah, I feel comfortable.
I know the building. One time, too, actually.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Castile?
Yes. Also, I assume, based on the fact that there's no off-street parking there, the 45 spaces that need to be added, is there already space for those? Or is this going to need additional construction and...
It's all... All that parking on the left end-
Already exists.
That's an existing paved area, yeah.
Not for him. I just... Let me, let me... I've got a question from Ms. Blair and Mr. Oaks. So, this is just for the 10 units, right? If they come back for, maybe to build out 44, they would have to bring an additional site plan, and we would have to approve that?
Correct. And this is the only portion of the property that they're purchasing that's zoned to allow this. So, if they wanted to use the building that's behind this, it currently would need to go through a rezoning process in order to do so. So, any... This is just approving the site layout for the 10-unit apartments, or up to 10-unit apartments and within zoning. So, and the site plan process in our code is about the entrance, the fencing, the landscaping, and the parking spaces primarily is the purview of the Planning Commission. The parking demand for this is 15 spaces, so they are almost, you know, 2 and 1/2 times of what the parking requirement is. And they've also exceeded the landscaping requirements by the code.
Okay, thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My only concern with this is that part there. Does it... Being said out loud that it's for 10 units and 25 parking spaces supersede what's written on the paper here?
It's... So, the parking is-
Because it says 44 and 68.
So, they are adding... They are formalizing the space to add parking. It's already paved. So, we didn't ask them to add parking islands. Our code says, when you create a new parking lot with 25 spaces, you're supposed to add 100 square feet of parking island. Since this is already developed, we didn't ask them to create those parking islands because we thought that it was most advantageous to have that landscaping dollar spent along the Cleveland Road frontage. So, that's where they're-
No, no. My only question is that the pay... It says 44 units.
Oh.
And 68 parking spaces.
Got it.
The site plan we're approving, but that's not actually the case. We're approving 10 and 25.
Correct.
And the fact that's written here.
Well, I think there's still 68 parking spaces.
Is there... Oh, if you count the ones behind? I mean, I guess either way, I think that this is a great use for the property. I'm with Mr. Zuloff that we just want to make sure they're decent size, and they have to be approved later with more specific plans, I assume.
Building plans, of course, yes.
Yeah. Okay. My only question is, have you worked with this developer before?
No.
Okay.
Call me out, but we had a contact, I think, contractor he's working with before.
Do you know if he's been successful in the past doing these types of developments?
I don't... Do not know that, no.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, it's one of those kind of fuzzy applications. I'm counting 46 parking spots on the screen that just turned on. You know, is there room for a few more, maybe? But, for 10 units, you know, I'm seeing 10 units. This is what I'm voting on. I think there's more than enough parking there, whether it's 60 or... I'm kind of thinking half that number would be more than enough for 10.
Yes, I would agree. I think there's ample parking for this particular application. All right. And any other questions from around the table? Thank you. Any questions from the gallery? Or any comments, other comments from the gallery?
At 1217 Columbus Avenue, I worked for Connor's mom, that building, in probably 2002 to 2007. And every time, I believe on the East Side, there would be like a stream. There's a little culvert type there, but you would smell various smells. And the joke was that that was built on the county landfill at the time, the Sandusky landfill. So, I wonder, were there any environmental... I know people don't do environmental statements anymore, but no idea what's underneath that. But, I just wanted to share that, that that was brought up every time.
Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
Yeah, interesting insight. Appreciate that. These would be building code issues, but, yeah. I mean, if you were building new, there'd definitely be nine mils of vinyl down there at least. Don't know. So, we're purchasing this property. I imagine we've done a Phase 1 at least.
Again, I've only been engaged for less than two weeks.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Honestly, I think his drive in having me do a layout is he's trying to get his financing in order, and he needs to estimate.
Sure.
So, it's kind of the first stage, getting the effort going, so.
Okay, thank you. And as Mr. Zuloff noted, those are Building Department issues, and I'll just defer to them as we go through this process. Thank you. Are there anybody else that wants to comment? If not, Mr. Hastings, you look like you may want to say something?
No.
Okay. If not, I'll come back to the table, and any discussion from around the table? If not, call for a vote.
Motion.
A motion, yeah.
Come on, somebody.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the site plan application, contingent upon the staff recommendations as they're outlined in the application.
It's been moved. Is there a second? Mr. Miller, seconds. Any additional discussion? I'll just say, before we vote, that I'm a little concerned about this particular project, but I guess the fact that you're only coming with 10 units, we'll be able to, if he wants to add additional units down the road, we'll be able to make a judgment at that time how these 10 worked out. So, I'll give him the benefit of the doubt.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
I'm happy to move it forward so that we can obtain financing for another fine project in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Ms. Ramble, would you call the roll, please?
David Miller?
Yes.
Jay Castile?
Yes.
Connor Whalen?
Yes.
Mike Zuloff?
Yes.
Steve Pajali?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right. Do we, before we adjourn, is there any updates, Ms. Blair? I'll beat Mr. Zuloff to the point.
Thank you. Let's put it on the agenda last time.
I've been mentioning the Wheels Park project is going along smoothly. We expect them to finish that up here within a couple of weeks.
Which one?
The Sandusky Wheels Park, if you missed the progress on that.
Everyone's excited.
Yeah, so hopefully, we'll still... The weather will hold out that we can have a little ribbon-cutting ceremony or something this year still.
Yes. When is that project set to be finished, you said?
There hasn't been the phone date, so I'll be careful to not say that. But, my understanding is it's within a couple of weeks. And then, you've noticed that our Columbus Avenue project is underway. We'll see, the first beginning of that work will be at the intersection of Water Street and Columbus Avenue. They're digging trenches and hooking up the water line. So, the water line is the first major portion of that project. Megan Stuckey is managing all of the communications. So, if you want on emails to get the most up-to-date information, let me know. I can make sure that you're on her list. I mentioned the newest art box project has been completed. So, that's one of the projects that the Public Arts and Culture Commission does, the painted utility cabinets. That's at Wayne Street and Water Street, so check that out. Shores and Islands has been completing a really large mural on the side of their building, so check that out. It's almost done. And Churchwell Park, so that's the first project coming out of the South Side Plan. That award is going to a contractor, I believe, for this coming city commission meeting. So, we've been working on the design for that park. And Public Works is getting that contractor on board to build it, which is exciting. And I gave a robust downtown parking study summary presentation to the city commission at their last meeting on October 14th. So, if you're interested in those results, I'd recommend watching that meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Any comments in Blair's report?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
Thank you very much for that. People keep asking about Battery Park. Can I tell them, well, you know? The developer wants to keep going. You're getting a lot of concern about what used to be the Cardinal Grocery and a lot of... So many people say, "I want a grocery downtown." So, there is... Anything we can do to build a fire under that one might, you know, might be a good idea. I don't think the owners have a grocery in mind there, though, right?
Their original concept was some sort of like marketplace, but that project didn't seem to move forward. And I haven't heard that there's any other plans for anything else. I know that grocery is one of the hardest things to do because you almost lose money on all the produce. And since our Kroger is within, it's like a mile or like 1.1 miles, that's really serving our area, so.
But, yeah, it's pretty close.
Yeah. And we have a Walmart and a Meyer, and, you know, we have everything, major groceries within really close distance of the-
It's kind of competitive. A Meyer's, Aldi, and Kroger all compete pretty...
I don't know.
Kind of pan-fight with each other, not to mention Walmart.
I know that they all tend to like high-volume corridors close to intersections of interstates. I've heard a couple of folks say, like, "Wouldn't it be great if we had Trader Joe's?" I think Trader Joe's prefers-
You're saying grocery stores generally?
Grocery stores generally, yes.
Yeah, right.
The Trader Joe wants a roadway that has 100,000 cars a day, and that gets, I think, 2,500, 2,500 cars a day go down Washington Street there. So, it's not a high, it's not a high-traffic location that a grocery store- So it's not a high, it's not a high-traffic location that a grocery store would want.
He'd have had a vision for...
Okay, if there's no other discussion, motion to a, Mr. Miller?
I'd like to make a comment, probably unnecessary, but I feel compelled to express my appreciation for staff that I was excited when I got to reviewing the agenda and realized the two items are bringing market-rate housing to our area. And I think that that happens as a result of the staff's willingness to work with people and find ways to make it happen. And I feel, I'm keenly aware that just because a plan is presented doesn't mean that that's what ultimately will be built. But it's the first step in a process that can get you there. And if you don't start, you'll never get there. I like it.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I understand adjourn.